Okay, it is nine o'clock. We're meeting in a central chair and run at the Hood County Justice Center at 500 West Pearl Street. Would y'all please rise for the invocation and the pledges?
Please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you do for us. We come to you today soliciting your guidance and wisdom as we do the community's business. Please keep a watchful eye over our troops and bring them home safely. In Jesus' name, amen.
Y'all join me in the pledge of allegiance to this proclamation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join in the pledge of Texas.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Bob, we have special presentations this morning?
Judge Commissaries, we're here to celebrate anniversaries for three employees. The first is, uh, the young lady, uh, who's doing an excellent job with the pledge and the balance for five years. And the next year, what I call the older tenure, April, celebrating 15 years with Hood County as Roger James, our sheriff. Roger, pick him up.
Keep a smile on your face.
All right. Judge Roman, you need to have your stay out here. And the last is, uh, the gentleman in our environmental group, James Gosman, and he also has been with us 15 years.
If you can pilot, comes up here, let me sort of solid.
Thank you, Bob. Congratulations.
I think that's the first time I've actually had to do all three, so that's good. All right, we also have some other special presentations. Judy Watson.
The court decided to do something when we have elected officials that have been in the office and they're retiring or leaving the office. And I'm honored to get to be able to read this proclamation for Judge Judy. Judge Judy has been with the county many years. She started out at George Smith's JP Court back in those days. I saw Judge Smith quite a bit for speeding tickets, so Judy saw me quite a bit. Also, her mother taught me in fifth grade, and her mother's taught most of Hood County residents that have lived here a long time. And her dad worked for my dad when he was a commissioner as well. So, the proclamation is Judy V. Watson Appreciation Day. We're going to proclaim that December the 17th, 2014, whereas for the past 22-plus years, Judy V. Watson has provided dedicated professional services to our community. And whereas Judy Watson's friends and coworkers at Hood County wish her the great best in her years to come. And whereas the Commissioners' Court of Hood County wishes to recognize Judy V. Watson for her years of service to Hood County with a special proclamation in her honor. Now therefore, in recognition of this outstanding work done by Judy V. Watson during her years of service in Hood County Justice of the Peace Precinct 3 Office, should be 3 and 4, but 3 Office now, the Commissioners' Court of Hood County do hereby proclaim that the 17th of December, 2014, is Judge Judy Watson Appreciation Day. And we urge all citizens to join us in extending your thanks and best wishes to Hood County Justice of the Peace Judy Watson, signed the 9th day of December, 2014. All official court members attested by Dean Armstrong. Mary, I'll bring down the presenting table. Thank you.
Thank y'all. It's been my pleasure to serve the citizens of Hood County.
We thought Steve should be doing this because he spent the best three years of his life under the administration of the [inaudible].
I broke a lot of cameras very late.
All right, the next, uh, award goes to, our first special presentation goes to Richard Rohn.
I'm going to present this. Richard Rohn, one time was my commissioner when I was Precinct 2. And when they changed the life, I was in Precinct 1. And Richard, though, he'd been up to me, I was undercover on the Commissioners' Court. And I really appreciate his stewardship with me and helping me out with the questions that I had. He was very helpful, and I believe he was a great commissioner. Richard, uh, Richard Rohn Appreciation Day, December 18th, 2014. Whereas for the past eight years, Richard Rohn has provided dedicated professional services to his community. And whereas Richard Rohn's friends and coworkers in Hood County wish him the very best in years to come, and whereas Commissioners' Court of Hood County wishes to recognize Richard Rohn for his years of service to Hood County, would put a special proclamation in his honor. Now therefore, in recognition of his outstanding work under Richard Rohn for his years of service in Hood County, Commissioners' Court Precinct 2 Office, Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, does hereby proclaim December 18th, 2014, Richard Rohn Appreciation Day. And urge that all citizens could join and extend their thanks and best wishes to Hood County Commissioners, Precinct 2, Richard Rohn, signed this 9th day of December, 2014, signed by the Commissioners' Court. Richard said in [inaudible] y'all come down here on this.
The last one would be Mary Burnett, Richard.
Oh, it's Richard.
It's my pleasure to read this for Mary Burnett. As all of you know, she's, she's had a rough year, including a balloon rash. And now, for those of you that don't know, she just recently, this week lost her mother. So, there are, there is information on the website concerning the services for Mary's mom, and I have a lot of stuff show up there. Mary Burnett Appreciation Day, December 19th, 2014. Whereas for the past 20 years, Mary Burnett has provided dedicated professional services to her community. And whereas Mary Burnett's plans and coworkers in Hood County wish her the very best in years to come. And whereas the Commissioners' Court of Hood County wishes to recognize Mary Burnett for her years of service to Hood County with a special proclamation in her honor. Now therefore, in recognition of the outstanding work done by her during her years of service in Hood County, in the clerk's office, the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas, does hereby proclaim December 19th, or December, 2014, is Mary Burnett Appreciation Day. And we urge all citizens to join in extending their thanks and their best wishes to the county of Mary Burnett, signed this 9th day of December, 2014. I mean, Dean Armstrong is the one that approached the court and asked us to do this, and actually, their staff, they wanted to [inaudible]. So, Dean, appreciate your thinking of that, and it's a good idea. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve these proclamations. Motion made by Commissioner Dean, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barrett. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Uh, does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Here is none. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Rohn. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Taub. Any further discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, the next item of business is subdivision roads and flats. I believe there's no items there, so Don, you get to just sit there for a minute. Uh, next, item B is budget finance. Consider budget line item amendments?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. There's one budget amendment that I would like to bring to your attention and request your approval. Last court, the district clerk and the tax attorney who represents Hood County brought to the court $19,744 of excess proceeds from the sale of tax properties. We held it at a very modest amount, and this is clearly additional revenue that we did not anticipate. So, I would like to certify that additional revenue and request that you allow us to transfer $18,744, which is the amount over the $1,000 budget in terms of your proceeds. Transfer that $18,744 into the capital fund 55. Of course, it's only a request. We do ask your approval. If you have another object that you would wish to apply this or appropriate it to, that should be just as well.
Okay, you've heard Stan talk about the budget line amendments and put the excess funds in Fund 55. Is any further discussion on that? Does anybody have any other line item they'd like to put this money in? Uh, well, the amount of the revenue was $19,744.63. And we had budgeted $1,000 for excess proceeds in the general fund. So, what I requested was to take the excess, $18,744, to Fund 55. Our motion made by Commissioner Barrett, and seconded by Commissioner Rohn, to put the excess over the budget amount of $18,744.63 into the capital fund, Fund 55. Any further discussion? And all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Considered as [inaudible].
Judge Commissioners, the total of these bills on the schedule come to $758,262.10. A large portion of that is to Brinkley Sargeant Architects for the YMCA project. Their fees on this schedule, $335,795.82. And then to US National Association for the Fuel Cars, $30,942.13. To Northeastern Asphalt for Road Ops Materials, $37,217.13. To Hood County Gravel District, quarterly fees for collection of taxes, $149,569.25. On your schedule, you see for the city of Granbury, utilities are scheduled to be paid for $54,202.36. After we made that schedule, we determined that there was a mistake on reading the meter of this building, and it amounted to about a $9,400 adjustment. So, we should be getting credit. We're going to plan to void that check and issue a correct check, which will be more than a range of $45,000 rather than $5,402.2. We have been in contact. We received preliminary credit from the city of Granbury, and that would be the only change to the schedule that I bring to your attention. But we do ask your approval to pay these bills.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to ratify [inaudible]. Motion made by Commissioner Dean, seconded by Commissioner Rohn. Any further discussion? And all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. And considered by proper action to authorize County Judge to sign an agreement with Knight Security Services to update the door access control system at the Justice Center.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Before I start, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Rohn, one of my, one of my bosses, for your service and your time in the commission. I appreciate it. And to all of you that have served in the years here going away, I appreciate it just as a citizen. Regarding the proposal from Knight Security, in the last Commissioners' Court, we discussed the needs that we have here at the Justice Center, as well as some that we had at other facilities. And the possibility of using the security fund that is designated to only be used for items like surveillance system and door access control lockdown systems, panic buttons, et cetera. And at that time, we only had about $34,000, and I'm going to misquote this, but in the $30,000 range, budgeted. And Stan did some research and was finding exactly what was in available, but was not budgeted. And the court had asked me to speak with Knight Security, talk about what it would take to complete both sides, not just the door access and correct a lot of things there and overhaul that, but also the video surveillance. Just really quick, I would like to just review that both of these systems were installed when the building was, was built. I believe that was probably 2006, if I'm not mistaken. The building was open. So, we're quickly approaching about nine years of that. There have been so many changes and so many updates, so many things happen that there's just a lot of things now that have really, we need to look at as a county. One of those is that our significant growth means that we need to really look at a unified system, something where we don't have disparate systems across the county. So that if, if we have security people looking at door access control here, they can look at door access control in another building whenever we add it. Whenever they look at surveillance here, they can look at surveillance in another building if that's what's needed to pull that up. That is my objective. That is the plan. And not only to think of the objective, but to think of what can we afford at the time? And what do we need to think about two steps ahead of now? So that in six to eight years from now, we're still working on a system that's unified and moving forward. Knight Security has been very good to work with us. We really, I put them under the gun on this one to try to get these numbers put together. And we had to move very quickly to walk the facility and really look at it, to get some quality numbers together. Knight Security is on the DIR. So, from a purchasing standpoint, that is a great help to us as the county, because they already have those negotiated prices in place. And so that is a big help for us there, and they're also helpful to us. So, working with them is a plus for us, because if we need something, they do have the ability to turn it around in 24 hours or less. If we want four-hour turnaround, we can actually give four-hour turnaround if it is something. That is up to us in the future to decide how we want to do that. So, with that being said, we, we looked at a lot of different things. I've thrown a lot of things at you, and I didn't mean to just overlook that, but I wanted to make sure it was thorough to, and at least that you had all that information. So, we pieced it together, and I'm just going to kind of summarize this, if it's all right. The Justice Center has two pieces to it. We have the door access controls, we have the video surveillance. So, you can see that, and I provided just kind of a summary sheet that's there. It's just a real basic spreadsheet that tells you the two numbers for the Justice Center, and then a subtotal for that. We also took a look at the courthouse, and we had a request to take a look at that system to see what it would take to tie it in, to give us some exterior cameras there, to look at exterior door entrances there, as well as the possibility of locking down the doors there. There would not be access control in that building, so it would not have car readers where you could actually access the doors right now, but would it have the ability on some of those doors to lock it down? Basically, if there was an incident, they can lock it down either from the courthouse or even remotely from here, if that, if that was needed. I have also given those totals, right in a subtotal there, of what it would take at the courthouse. We've already done some cameras down at Annex 2, and Animal Control is going to be having some cameras there. All of these systems would be able to be unified, so that if there's any kind of an incident, if there's something going on, if we have an emergency and we're in the EOC and we need to bring up the cameras and view different sites for some reason, we have that ability, because we'd be working on a unified system. And I just think it's, it's that important. Keith Russell from Knight Security is here with me today. He made the trip down to just answer any questions, if there are any questions, about any details or anything pricing-wise, or just anything that you might have there. There's a lot of information here. I was speaking with James earlier, and then I would, I would really think that if, if the court feels that it is important that we review this further, that maybe it is the best thing to appropriate the funds and make those funds available to the court. And then, if, if so, then I would, I would also say, let's get together with a commissioner and myself, and maybe the county judge, and Keith, and myself, and anyone else that needed to be involved, and review these, go over these if you'd like to, and just make sure that, that everyone is comfortable with where, where we think we're headed and what's, what's needed here. And I would just open up it right now, any kind of questions, words you got, or?
I don't know what it is.
Yes, sir.
First one is going to be directly to Stan. Whenever, we talked about this two weeks ago, we talked about the money and the security and how fast that money grew. Did we not use security fund at the courthouse when we, whenever Judge Rash was here and Judge Doctor was coming on, we renovated the courthouse? Did we not use around $300,000 for that money out of the security fund to do the cameras and some of the upgrades in that building? And now it's already grown back to, what, $170,000?
I don't recall any in particular, Commissioner. It's possible, I could certainly go back and look.
Okay. Jackie, I know you and I talked many times. I, I'm opposed to this project. It's how you pay for it, how you figure out, but what you said to me numerous times is, and I think Steve Siegler was in one of our meetings discussing this, this building has some issues that need to be addressed. But I know that Judge Tugwell and Judge Talkman talked about the courthouse. But Annex, you know, the Annex and Treasury Museum has issues, and whether we remodel that building or not, they're for the Treasurers at, in these cameras. Teresa McCoy is asking, talking about cameras. So, if we're going to do this, you know, I'm all about putting people on the committee to look at that. And I mean, I'd like to know how long is the night, you know, what we have in front of us today, and how long that's good for? And also some options that we could come back and say, you know, we can do these two projects and get to this one next, next year, whatever. But Judge, I mean, I'd like to see Commissioner Dean, yourself, my claim, which keeps a similar project being on the five-year-old game, to review some of these security issues.
I ask you to come up, so if you can address how long this bid is good for.
Yeah, our pricing is good for 90 days, given the time to do it, but unless pricing changes to us, your pricing won't change.
Well, so 90 days is a long time to, like, I'm sure Jackie got back and addressed the fact, and wanted some other questions to answer about the camera versus just the key readers. So, I would prefer, I mean, what we've done here, and I've seen for eight years, is we usually, whoever gets it, somebody else wants something or we need it, so we go back, and it would be better if we got it all blown up some, or got a bid blown up some, and then see what we can afford and not afford. But I do know there's other elected officials that wanted, that said, address the fact, you know, and the sheriff brought it up to Jackie that they wanted an animal control. Then they want it, you know, we had an issue at the courthouse. Our building, for example, is a lot of money taken in taxes, et cetera. I'd just like to have all of the information. But then, like Jackie said, along with the sheriff and Steve Siegler, since Steve did this so long, he's not in that job any longer, but he used to do this when he was down in this building. It'd be nice to have somebody monitoring it, and that, and I'd like to share with Steve to see if it's possible that when they monitor here on this building, can they still watch or have a panic alarm if something happened at the, at the Annex or at our building, that they could zero down that, and send officers or lock that building up.
This is one of the things that was extremely important, and Keith and I discussed this yesterday, that with the unified system, we can unify the panic alarms in with the system in the future, so that not only does it notify, you know, somebody local right there, or dispatch possibly, or just, it actually notifies the people that are over security for the county. And, and so that they're aware of what's going on, and they can remotely immediately see what's happening, if they're not already looking at it, but they can look at it right then, but they can also lock down the facility in the, in the future. So, something is going to grow this, and I think one of the most important things to me is that, as important it is to all of us to use as local people that we can and do things at a local level, there's something that we grow, that we have to look at companies that have been around, that have a, a longer term, that they've been in business, that have a relationship with the state and DIR, and that have good references that come to me from counterparts of other counties and cities that have had good relationships and that work with them on an evolving basis. Anywhere skilled from what we need, you know, to all the way to up to counties that have 1300 and 1500 cameras in place. So, that's important to us on our side. And that's, that's the reason, and I appreciate that, Commissioner, and I think that Keith was even on board, we discussed it this morning on the phone.
Yeah, if I can, Jack. So, what I've been talking to Jackie for better part of six months on, I mentioned several of you, is a unified, he was going on the unified platform. Right now, you have not only disparate systems in your facilities, you have disparate communication, you have different types of communication. And in a security scenario, usually you set those up to be redundant, so you have a hard-line hotline that will fire out, and you have to set it back up, and that's a subling included. That's where Jackie has to move and put together. And all of the systems that you have currently, as you move forward, can be part of this. I understand what Jackie has to do is get all of the pricing together in the last, what, five days. I couldn't move that fast. I mean, it wouldn't be doing good work to do that that fast. Acting where I've been working on still right now. So, in regard to that, if, if there's other sites that you want to look at, I'd just like to, I'd be more than happy to go walk them, going down here, or?
Well, I don't think it makes any sense. What happens to us is that somebody here, somebody else has a camera, or one that was put in, hired, not hired, had been put in by different funds to watch a back door, all of a sudden failed, and Jackie, being here a short time, less than five years, doesn't realize where it came from. So, then he comes forward and asks the court, well, that's been put in with, the sheriff has one here, or JP has one there, or the judge put one up from this angle, and it just needs to be monitored. I mean, who's monitoring was the question that was asked by Jackie. Sheriff is, is obviously over security of the county facilities. But, I mean, I need more information on what it would cost if we unified it across the county. Because, but my question to you, Keith, would be, how long have we spent this kind of running? How long will we expect with today's technology? How long will we expect with today's technology and what goes on with the system to have to have major overhaul or upgrade again?
Okay, so one of the things that we concentrated on when I walked this building originally, you have, currently have a proprietary system in place on the access control side. And that, what I mean by proprietary is that panel works with that software, works with that reader on the system. This system that we proposed is open architecture, which means the panels that are being used, the actual hardware and the infrastructure that you put in can work with multiple different softwares. So if Jack Tech, which is what we've led to here, isn't what you want for years, it's not a hardware swap out, it's not a go-in, pull-wire, you ain't got the panels, it's a go-to-computer, take the software off that computer, change all your databases, see you have all your hard disks, and upgrade the software, now you have a different platform using, giving you different options from a different vendor, if you so choose, for a low expenditure instead of a capital expenditure. Same thing goes on the camera side. To your point about adding cameras from point to point. Jackie, and I want to hear your opinion, this is the last few years from what I understand, is tying all your buildings together on a network, a more robust redundant network. The cameras and the access control and the intrusion that we've all talked about, you know, as I've been doing this, is all IP-based. So if you needed to add a camera and you had a big enough bandwidth to that other building, you had the camera and a license, and now it's being recorded over its MDF one. This is a growable system. It's on the current platform. It is as future-proof as I can make it, with the exception of I can't control the manufacturer writing the software. But if you don't like that manufacturer through years, you change the software, you don't change the panels or the cameras or anything else. So we're trying to make it as open architecture and as upgradable as possible. But I would tell you, 10 to 15 years, that's the short term. It could be 20.
So the nine years we've had, nine years we've had here since '06 basically, thought blew bad, thought terrible?
No, and to tell you the truth, the issue with the system that you had installed on the access control portion here is it was the way it was installed, from what I've seen. The panels were on the ceiling around the area and their data chain together with an old data connection to 232. And that was your issue. And just one other, what I want to make on the system that we proposed, the wiring that you have, the CAT 5, category cable, CAT 5, CAT 6, is 25-year rated wire. So that infrastructure that you put in should last a long, long time.
On page six, and I know this is not quickly, but number one says that the prices are just rescinding, not hanging. And also, I had a little concern as we were talking, requiring mobilization, 30% of the total. Are we talking about the polling presented here?
So the, that's the standard language in our proposals to go out. Typically, we get a contract, we order the equipment, and we have a great cost to us at that time that's actually over 30%. That's what we request if there's something we need to work out with the city on payment terms.
Yeah, I was going to say, because there are also this, and items there that you're not responsible for, that for us, depending on their condition now, can get expensive.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Infrastructure, licensing permits, you know, a bunch of other stuff that's included. But I just wondered, is that, I know this is preliminary, but I just wonder how solid are these numbers?
The primary, I gave you, lay out a couple of those things for you, Commissioner, that the cost that I've asked Keith to not include in this was number one, the cabling. Because we are in the process of a network overhaul this year already. So we have that already in place, and I'm trying to work that out, where that cabling part could fit in with the rest of our overhaul for that. The side with, the only other piece that is really a standout piece here is the actual servers, the computers that would take to archive this and how long we want to archive it. I spoke with the sheriff about that. How many days realistically do we need to keep video before it goes away? And we've discussed that and talked about it, and so we know how much storage do we need to store that video so that if something, if we have an incident of some type, how long can we go back and do that? Obviously, we can store forever. We just can't. It's not reasonable to really keep that long.
Can you take a section out of it, short?
Yes, sir. So if you have an incident, you know it's a possibility that you may need that, you could always export that out and save it and retain that. And that's basically what we do already with our cars. I mean, if we, if there's something they need to keep, they flag it, they can export it, and then they can save that, and it won't be deleted, even if you mark it. And that's the same, that's the same thing that we would be able to do with this. But the main, the main cost we had to look at outside of Knight Security is our cable and our servers. Of course, the thing that you'll always move a little bit is licensing. If we decide to add another user onto the system, you know, if we add another station that, you know, another security station that we want them to build a few of those cameras, that changes a little bit. But even at some point, you reach a point where you say, it's large enough that we should just get a site license where we can have as many connections as we need to that system. So...
So what do we need to do to appropriate getting this started?
I had, my initial thoughts were that, number one, we had just a priority of things here. First one would be that the funds need to be available to the court. The court, we would still need to come to the court and get that approved, and that's the reason that we talked about having some people review all of these, look at the other facilities now, and check those. But the first thing would be to actually have the funds available. And that's what Stan kind of discussed in the last meeting, and we wanted to look and see, hey, what are we going to be looking at? Is it, is it another $50,000, is it another $65,000? We wanted to actually get kind of a ballpark on this part of it to see where we were. So that you would know, do we need to appropriate how much of that money, do we need to make available? And that was our, that was our goal with this. And that's my initial thought right now, is that if you want the funds available, that we start there. And then the next step would be, how much do we use of that and leave some reserve there and let it continue to grow? And then how much do we do with the other buildings? And how do we phase that? If we don't do it today, how do we phase that out in the future?
Well, let me ask, I've heard questions and I've heard, now, if we go ahead and do this, that will not affect anything? I mean, we could go ahead and incorporate other buildings into this present system, right?
Yes, this system is, can expand as big as you want. Devon County has this system that enables 1,300 cameras on the current. This system can handle as thousand cameras and over a thousand over.
So we could do this and you could go around and visit the other buildings with Jackie and then if you like, stay in that office committee and get back to that committee and do it. But we could go ahead and do this now?
Yes, sir.
And the expanded building just going forward, once you have the infrastructure in place, is easier than what you have currently.
I have a question if you want to proceed though. If I have a lockdown at the courthouse, when the majority of the money that's already kept is already in safety, that's the one you want?
The liability there when we were over there with the judge and had, was he asked us, what else are we missing? From my background of doing this, I've been in these counties for a lot of years. And I asked him, I said, well, what kind of incidents have you had? And he talked about a shooting that he had on a police officer, maybe a lot from there several years ago. And in regard to that, I said, well, if you're looking at locking down your facility in a first-person shooter situation, I said, then you need to look at locking out your doors. Unfortunately, that's going to be hard because of that building has bricks this thick and we have to get down. I have to talk down the basement of that building. So what we did was provide the videos for him, so that he wanted to be able to have, to see something on the outside of the building, somebody walking in who was upset or physically carrying something. And then if you see that person, well, what are your options? Can you hit a button and have us throw the sign to go off? Or can we actually physically lock down the building? And that's what the secondary one was for.
Well, I'm not saying I just want to make sure, and if they did go ahead and we could integrate later.
Yes, sir. There's no issue with integrating going forward. The technology that's coming out from the camera side and from the panel side is robust. The cameras, most manufacturers, Sony, Panasonic, Axis, are all going for an audit standard which works with the system and many, many other systems.
Now, this door right down here, are you, I know that you can get out from the inside, but it's, I mean, a lot of times you can't because it just won't open. Are you fixing that down?
Okay, so you have a capital figure on that door.
Right.
We will look at that when we're, have we can straighten it out and clean it up? Yes, we'll clean it up.
All right, Rick, I got a quick comment. The courthouse door lockdown, or the store commission, let us do that?
I think, I'll interject, I can't say for sure. That was one of the reasons I told Keith that at the courthouse especially, it's important that we address the court on that and ask that question. Whenever it comes to, it seemed like from a security standpoint, they were a little bit more open to some of those things. It's almost like the ADA access, that it's a must-have. You really need that access. You really need the ability if you want access control or lockdown or surveillance, you know, for several reasons, you know, not just if you have a security incident, but also if you just have an accident on the premise right there, that being able to have something there might help you out.
Well, I'm not prepared to vote, because we don't know if we're getting the money. That's why I said Mr. Deaver and Judge Doctor, Mike Lane came 20-plus years before PD, Sheriff's been here, well, he's a fire watcher, Steve Seeger is the one that's been in this building, IP and Jackie have obviously seen. So those committees need to get together and answer these kind of questions and then bring back the recommendation. My fear is, if the court's done it ever since I've been here, we spent $150,000 for the two that's listed, and then it's easy to say, we don't have the money to fix anything else. So it needs to be a, we need to see the whole bowl of soup, so to speak, before we make a treaty and have it coordinated after it doesn't have six-month gap in between, if it doesn't work on something, we have to be talking to the entire city.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to table this until that committee can be...
Well, I make the motion, we table it with the recommendation, those seven members to get together and come back with the recommendation or interjects this over the next, you know, 30 days. Yeah, I would accept that.
I'd like to ask the court one more quick. How much money we have in this $170,000?
There's cash in the bank is $176,609. Okay, question is, if we decide to do this big package, can we go out of $155,000 clean?
Well, but I might understand that's why it is going to committee. Somewhere, we use some money in security funds back when we renovated the courthouse. Okay, I want to see what we use there. And I won't stand at a time and go back and see what account that it came out of. And then if it's rebuilt in five years or six years to 170, we'll know how fast it grows.
I think that might have been budget money that was for the renovation of the courthouse for courthouse security budget line item for that. I'm not sharing.
But it did come out of, it did come out of also security funds. He didn't answer the question about how fast it grows, but he, we don't know that. I don't know, we should all figure that out.
Well, our budget of revenues is from $40,000 to $41,000 a year. And, you know, our balance October 31st was $176,609. I do not believe there has been anything spent from that, although there would be November and December revenues posted to it.
Okay, okay. I'd have a motion made by Commissioner Barrett-Satan, by Commissioner Rollins to table this until the committee that could be formed and reported back to the Commissioners' Court on a consolidated, integrated system for all security from the county facilities. How was that, Jackie?
Fantastic.
All right. Any further discussion? Is it all in favor? I propose, motion carried. Thank you very much, Pete.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Consider take appropriate action to approve request for the purchasing department to award a blanket purchase order for bulk fuel for the voluntary fire departments for the calendar year 2015 of Lambert and Lambert Oil.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Each year we do this because we used to operate off the interlocal agreement with City Hall. The bulk fuel suppliers don't like to deliver to us because our needs are very small compared to what they normally do. So each year we put this out so that we can do a blanket purchase order. It doesn't guarantee a price for the entire year, but you can see what their margins are. And that's how we will award it. Because the price will fluctuate. We all know fuel does. But this way, we have someone that we can just call out. We don't have to bid it every time, do all that. We are not quite to the point that we have to do a formal competitive bid on it. Right now, it's running about $45,000 a year. When it gets to 50, if it does, we will. So this is our way of handling it everywhere. I put this out in early November, and they returned their quotes fairly quick. We only had two responses from the five I sent it to. The margin for Lambert was 12 cents. The margin for the other was, I think, 35. So it's my suggestion that we go back with Lambert again and...
They're holding down. This just guarantees that difference. I mean, so if the price goes down below $2, we will not be paying 230 or 242. Is that right?
It means their markup.
Will be 12 cents.
12 cents.
No matter what, okay.
And everybody around here stays around the same. I mean, there might be a penny or two difference in their fuel bit.
35 versus 12.
That's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So I'll entertain a motion, a motion made by Commissioner Deaver, I have a second. Second by Commissioner Rollins. Any further discussion on Lambert Oil being the supplier for the voluntary fire departments for the calendar year 2015? Is it all in favor? Proposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussing take appropriate action regarding the Wolf Hall uplift application. I want to go into executive session under Local Government Code 551087 for Economic Development, so this can be discussed. All right, so we'll go in there. Sheriff, can you let us in?
47.
Yeah, we're going in at 47.